...to reconvene, please. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. De Silva. The agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question.
Evelyn Slachbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place, 16A. I have a few questions. So, one is...
I'd like to ask you if you could hold your questions on that item until after the board committees give their reports because under negotiations, I think a lot of the questions will be answered. So if you wouldn't mind, after the board committee reports, we were then asked again to open up the floor for questions.
You'll ask for questions again?
Yes.
Before you vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is this the time if I have something to ask for my school, I can do it?
That would be at the end of the meeting. This is for items that are on the agenda right now. So if you stay at the end of the meeting, you can get up and ask. Thank you. Anyone else?
It's difficult. Did you guys have any...
My phone's on. Okay. Does anyone else have any questions or comments they'd like to... Okay. Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Our apologies that our executive took a little bit longer than it was supposed to. We appreciate you hanging out for that. I do have an extensive report that I'm in the process of putting together in regard to our administrators and what they're up to and about our teachers and the great things that are happening in our schools. I prefer to complete that report and do that on November 15th in light of the length of this meeting at this point. But what that report does is it takes those great things that are occurring at this point and kind of compiles them in a way so that the public has an understanding of what's going on throughout the district. So if it's up here with the board, I'm going to do that at our November 15th meeting. Sound good?
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Winker.
No report this evening, however, which is a matter of record. When we first did roll call earlier, Ms. Mavertich hadn't arrived yet. She arrived while we were in executive session at approximately 6:15.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Fair, do you have anything for us this evening?
Nobody.
Okay. My report. I'd like to congratulate the Bergen County students that from across the country auditioned this year for the Bergen County Middle School Chorus. Ten students from Roundup Ridge Middle School were accepted into this year's honors chorus and will represent Mawa Public Schools at their concert on Sunday, November 19th. So please join me in congratulating eighth graders Adya Mahathi, Nitya Kanduro, Megan Dursima, Paige Loya, excuse me for mispronouncing any names, Erin Ryan, Fatima Abdel Salam, Halaina Adozalek, and seventh graders Lena Gilbert, Gaia... This is really difficult. I'm sorry, kids. Gaia Victormini and Alice Fang. Congratulations to all of them. And then, close to 200 students from schools across the county auditioned for this year's Bergen County Middle School Band. And out of those 200 students who auditioned, only 70 students were selected. And we are excited to let you know that two students from Roundup Ridge Middle School were among those accepted. Please join me in congratulating Kesha Goll, who's in seventh grade, and Helanya Adozalek, who's in eighth grade, on their acceptance into this elite ensemble. The board committee reports. The board committee? Yes. Mr. Gallo.
For schools foundation liaison, they had a very successful ladies' night out last, beginning of last week. And we had a grants meeting on Friday to talk about a whole bunch of different things that teachers have asked for that the schools foundation has graciously agreed to fund. So we're excited about that. And as always, we're appreciative of the schools foundation's efforts.
Thank you very much.
I'm speaking on behalf of the negotiations committee. Negotiations committee was charged by the executive committee of the board to undertake the process of reviewing the renewal of the superintendent's contract. This process began in August. It was extensive and involved all the members of the board working through their committees. The process essentially consisted of reviewing Dr. Shone's...
It's not working.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I meant F. Sorry. My apologies. The process began in August, involved all of our board members working through their committees. Essentially, it consisted of three components. The first component was examining and reviewing Dr. Shone's formal goals and her achievements. And especially, and then a component related to unplanned achievements. Then we looked at her assessment of the district's challenges and opportunities going forward. And then we took an overall snapshot of the district. After reviewing all that material and getting feedback from almost every board member, the negotiations committee developed a recommendation for the overall board, which we are looking at in 16A today, to rescind Dr. Shone's current contract and replace it with a new contract. When you walked in, there was a handout next to the agenda that has the highlights of some of the changes in her contract. And I would just like to point out that essentially, other than that her term is changing from 7/1/17 to 6/30/22, and that her salary is changing in accordance with newly revised state guidelines on superintendent pay, all the remainder of her contract essentially remains the same. It was with unanimity that the negotiations committee considered the recommendation and considered all the materials. It was particularly heartening to have the opportunity to review the numerous challenges and accomplishments that were achieved under Dr. Shone and her team's leadership. She has demonstrated her ability to be an excellent administrator, but more importantly, a team leader, to have guided the district to accomplishments that only a few years ago we could have thought, could have only dreamed of. My children currently don't attend the district, but I would certainly, if I had the opportunity to send them through the district again, is with great confidence that I would be able to send them to the district, and I wouldn't think of sending them to any other district. That's my report, and that's my recommendation, that's the recommendation of the negotiations committee to the board to take full action on 16A.
Thank you. The other committees? Any reports? Okay. We have to open up once more, please, for agenda questions. Slachbauer.
Do I have to say it again? Evelyn Slachbauer, 43 Thunderhead Place. Okay, I have some practical questions, I guess. Okay. So I wanted to find out about the impact on the budget because merit goal bonuses were approved in the August 30th agenda, which were included in the previous contract, which was rescinded. Is that included in the new contract? And the percentages now are going to be based upon the new base pay?
Mr. Gallo.
So, we have a $60 million-plus budget. Though the change in pay for Dr. Shone may be significant to the district, it's about $4,000. I believe the goals remain in place. That's not changed by the change in the contract?
The percentage is based on the base pay. So the percentage increases each year then?
That is correct.
Okay. So for the 2016-2017 school year, the merit goals were never disclosed on the agenda, and the amount that was actually paid was never disclosed. I went through all the agendas and I did not see the goals...
Can you put that microphone on?
Sorry, not on? Hello?
Yes.
Better? Okay. So for the 2016-2017 school year, I went through all the agendas and the merit goals were never disclosed, and the amount that was actually paid for them was never disclosed.
I find that very interesting, Mrs. Slachbauer. I know that the way in which the resolution is written for the merit goals to be approved changed over the last couple of years. So it may very well have went to, the board is approving these without listing the goals. We do now list them. However...
No, and they were listed in previous years, and in this year, they were listed. For like, they were never listed last year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't have the agendas in front of me.
No, that's okay.
I was taught there to be able to take a look at, but we will certainly check into it and get back to you tomorrow.
Yeah, okay. So, anyway. And then, the $5,000 high school salary increment, is that a fixed amount, or does that increase approximately $100 each year for the 2%?
That's a great question. Currently, my current contract includes a $2,500 stipend for having a high school in a district. So any superintendent who has a high school in their district, under the past salary cap, receives $2,500. Since the salary cap's changed over July 1st of 2017, it is now $5,000, and it's a one-shot deal. So it's not $5,000 plus a 2% increase every year.
Okay, but it's $5,000 every year?
No.
Under the contract, or just for the first year?
Just for the first year.
Just for the first year. Okay. And then, last question is, is the contract a public document? And I'm asking because as far as job description and things that are included in your base salary versus something that could be paid out on a merit bonus. So for example, in the 2014-2015 school year, one of the goals was determining, discussing, and evaluating the district's assessments administered at all grade levels. As a citizen, that to me would be part of your job description, I would think. So to me, why it would be a goal is a little confusing. The other one that kind of was confusing was from 2015 to 2016 school year, completing ATOON classroom visitations instructional rounds during the 2015-16 school year, which were 15 minutes in length and occurred in three non-tenured classrooms in each of her six schools. So for a total of 18 visits at 15 minutes apiece, which comes out to 270 minutes divided by 60 minutes, which are four and a half hours, the bonus was $4,187.50. So I'm confused. Isn't part of classroom visitation, isn't that part of what you should be doing anyway as a superintendent?
Well, I think my first answer to you, Mrs. Slachbauer, is that the merit goals were approved by the full board at the time. Right? So the decision as to what is, should be meritorious, right, is something that's included at the time based on a number of different factors, whatever they may be at the time. What I won't do here is talk to you about what the worth of those merit goals are based on the fact that the full board approved them at the time. And although we may agree to disagree, it were, there were merit goals that were put together with the board that were approved by the board, and the amount associated with them is the amount that was associated with them.
Okay, so is there...
Well, they're also approved at the county.
Yes.
Is there a public description of basically your job that kind of goes into detail and says, okay, this, you know, this is what's expected?
Board policy.
There is a board policy in regards to my job description, sure. But merit goals are often, or should be based on what is needed at the time. You know, the merit goals this year are representative of what the district currently needs. One could argue that every single thing that I do should be part of what it is that I do. But if you look at the job description, it doesn't specifically say, okay, she's going to do observations. It also doesn't say that I'm going to wash the buses. I don't find that meritorious. But could it be one? If it's not in the job description, I guess it could be. At the end of the day, I'm pretty much responsible, right, for the good running of the school district. What merit goals allow superintendents to do from an informational standpoint for you is, is allow us to get more money in our salary as a result of the fact that many of us were decreased in salary when the salary caps went into place years ago. So as we talk about raises and moving forward, one of the reasons the board is considering this is that I have not received a raise in the last five years, nor have any of my other, of my other colleagues. So the consideration of the board was, hey, listen, you know, they were lifted. As far as the merit goals are concerned, we can argue whether or not you find them worthy. What I can tell you is, is that they were vetted by the board of ed, and they were vetted by the county superintendent, and they were approved.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Hey, hi. If I may?
Yes.
Bill Half, New Jersey Education Association. If I make him a suggestion next time, it might be advantageous for the superintendent for at least to be able to have one, a liaison on the board to talk to the teachers, and I presume he did with the administrators, but at least to see how, if we can give some personal input onto the quality job she's done. So I think it would be advantageous for the entire district to get an insight all the way from, if you will, from the bottom up.
Well, you have the mic down, Bill. It's good to go.
Yeah. Well, I'm just one person in the group.
You're hired.
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? The only one's going to ice. Sold. Thank you. Could you have any board member remarks, traditional comments on reports or other non-agenda items? Anyone? Okay. May I have a motion to move old business? Mr. Wendrickwitz, second by Ms. Conoco. Any discussions, comments? Any of that, the old minutes? No? Okay, Kyle, could you please take...
Mr. Wendrickwitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertich?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Okay. May I take a motion to move new business? I'd like to take 16...
15.
Oh, no, I think it was 15, I was just going to say 3. Uh-huh. 15. New business, I'd like to take 15A through P. Mr. Gallo, second by Mr. Denise.
Excuse me. May I pull 16A out, please?
Yeah, we're not to 16 yet. We're 15A through P. Not to 16 yet.
Apologize.
Would you like to go on that?
Do you have a second?
Yes, I had Mr. Gallo as a, made motion, and Mr. Denise second.
All right. Just a little line.
Mr. Wendrickwitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, but in 15A, I am abstaining from check number 88326.
Mr. Kazmarski? Yes. Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertich?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Wendrickwitz, do you want to say something?
I did, I did. Wrong place. I'd like to pull 16A apart from the rest of the new business, please.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion to proceed on new business? Mr. De Silva, second by 16A. 16A only. Mr. De Silva and Mr. Wendrickwitz, second by that. Any comments? The board? Okay. We'll take a roll call on that.
Mr. Wendrickwitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Proud, yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes, absolutely.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Absolutely.
Ms. Mavertich?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Most definitely. Thank you.
May I have a motion now to proceed with new business, 16B through K. Mr. Wendrickwitz, second by Mr. De Silva. Any comments? I just have a comment as a proud mom of 16E, of the creation of the film club that was my son and his friend. So Jordan Barron and Ken Sagabi created that club, so very proud of that. Okay. Could you take...
Yes, of course. Mr. Wendrickwitz?
Yes.
Mr. De Silva?
Yes.
Mr. Denise?
Yes.
Mr. Gallo?
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski?
Yes.
Ms. Conoco?
Yes.
Ms. Mavertich?
Yes.
And Ms. Barron?
Yes.
Any other public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes.
Good evening. Like a rock star.
Andy Vitell, MBEA Vice President. So I just wanted to raise an issue I think speaks to the board, teacher relations, and a matter of transparency. So about a month and a half ago, the MBEA sent a questionnaire to all six of the candidates running for the three-year terms on the board. Gave ample time for the responses. There were 10 questions, you know, on the questionnaire. All three of the challengers responded, but the incumbents on the board refused to, citing the legal advice, I mean, I guess concerns about, if I read it correctly, fear of an MBEA endorsement and how that might compromise any of you if you were to be re-elected on participating in matters affecting the MBEA moving forward. You know, frankly, for us, this was confusing because the note that was attached to the 10 questions said nothing about an endorsement. It didn't have the word endorsement. It didn't imply an endorsement. It was simply about trying to get information to share with our members. We have a number of members, about 100 or so, maybe more, who live in town and vote. There are also about, you know, 600 total NJA members who live in town, who often reach out to us and ask questions about, you know, who are the educator, you know, supported candidates? Who are the best candidates to support, you know, the issues that matter to educators in the district? And so, really, what we were trying to do is just best inform, you know, our members and supporters of, you know, who to vote for. Not endorsement, but just kind of providing information. And so, you know, it was strange and kind of off-putting, frankly, that we didn't get a response. And then, in the interim, over the last few weeks, several of the members, you know, posted voluminously on Facebook sites. And then today, we received the responses from the three incumbents. And so I guess the lawyer said it was okay now to respond.
I can answer that for you.
But, no, no, I'll give you a chance. I'll just, I'll get through all the remarks. So, so just, the reason I bring this up is because from our perspective, from the teacher's perspective, you know, it just kind of felt like we are, the issues and concerns important to us were not important to the board and kind of disregarded in that sense. And that you didn't feel like you had to be responsive to issues related to the MBEA. And, you know, under, over the last three years and under the time you've been president, Ms. Barron, I mean, it's been a tough couple of years, the last two in particular. But we ended, you know, last year on what we thought was a positive note. And I think, you know, as we started this year, even the administration team, the MBEA have made conscious efforts to kind of try and mend some relations, and this felt like a step backward. And so, you know, thank you for finally responding this morning. It doesn't really help us get that message out. I mean, our voter guide went out a week and a half ago. But, you know, I think the question really is, if re-elected, and this is for each of the three of you, you know, what do the next three years look like? What specifically will each of you do to improve relations? You know, I think we all agree that education works best when all the stakeholders involved are working toward a common goal. And, you know, we would love a board that is supportive of teachers and works collaboratively with the MBEA, and, you know, this feels like it wasn't, excuse me, it wasn't working in that direction. So if you could share what you would do if re-elected, that'd be helpful. Excuse me. Thank you.
I think that you, didn't you ask us that in your questionnaire? Did we answer that?
I don't believe so. I didn't say about specifically those relations.
The only issue that I have, Andy, and I understand where your question is coming from, my only hesitation is, is the board now is, would then be the incumbent somewhat campaigning from their seats for a position on a ballot. In other words, all the other candidates didn't have the opportunity to have a video that Mrs. Slachbauer, you were right there?
No, no. I'm just gonna pass this off to you. It's all right. I gotta focus on what I'm doing.
Do you understand what I'm saying? I know that they answered all of the questions today, but my concern is, is that the opportunity... No, I don't see maybe campaign is the wrong choice of words, but the candidates here who are, the candidates who are sitting in the audience don't have the same opportunity as a candidate sitting here to answer the same question that you're asking.
So at what point would a, so if a board member is running for reelection, they cannot answer any questions asked by an MBEA member?
Well, I can, I can read the, what I have here, so I don't, I don't make a mistake here.
And I'm not saying that they can't answer it, but in the form that you're asking and the way, the way in asking in this forum right now, based on the fact that they didn't answer it then, that the MBEA wasn't privileged to their responses at the time, they have since provided those responses.
Yeah, I guess if you could explain though, so, I mean, I think I tried to explain why, you know, but, no, no, but if...
I would, if you give me a moment.
Yeah, but if you could explain kind of the thought process of why go to the lawyer and then...
I will.
That's so dramatic.
I will, okay. And I've written it down so that I don't make a mistake in reading this. So upon the BOE attorney's recommendation and rulings dealing with school ethics, the incumbents were advised not to answer questions from the MBEA because our answers could jeopardize our ability to participate in contract negotiations or other issues pertaining to teacher union topics. Had our answers elicited an endorsement by the New Jersey Education Association or the MBEA, we would have definitely been restricted from participating in the above-mentioned issues. In light of that trusted professional recommendation, we felt it best to decline answering in order to protect ourselves, the BOE, and the district from any conflicts in the future. I thanked the, I thanked the MBEA for adding that disclaimer to the bottom of the flyers when you sent it out. Now, after the MBEA endorsed a candidate, the incumbents were free to answer the questionnaire, which we all did today, and Ms. Dorsey, you received our answers. In further clarification, the incumbents did provide answers to similar questionnaires because I know there was a question, there were other questionnaires out there, why did we answer them, that were circulated by other groups. Our attorney assured us that there were no ethical prohibitions that would not allow BOE candidates to provide answers to questions posed from any other group not affiliated with the MBEA. So that is why we didn't answer. It wasn't that we were afraid of receiving your endorsement. If we did, then we would have been restricted. So it was best for us not to put it out, thinking that maybe we might have gotten your endorsement, which would have been fantastic, but we then would be restricted in participating on anything that might...
But you do understand, and political endorsements work both ways. So a candidate would have to seek that endorsement, and an organization would have to offer that endorsement, and neither was happening.
Well, we weren't going to seek it, because if we did...
And we weren't necessarily offering it.
Right, well, then we're both...
But we were just looking for answers to simple questions, many of which you responded to, as you said, in other forums.
So that we used to have the answers in the other forums, you could have seen them.
Well, some of them, some of them.
Yeah, and then we answered them today. I mean, we, we listened to our attorney. So we didn't all want to put us at risk or the district at risk.
I think it's just a strange thing to think like, oh, here are some questions from our teachers, let's find out what our lawyer thinks before we answer them.
Well, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing before we do it.
So if one of us had just sent the questions to you as a teacher and not as the MBEA, would you have answered them?
Probably would have still asked the attorney. What do you think we should do, right?
Wait, which, wait, Mr. De Silva and Ms. Barron, you just said conflicting things.
So if, if an individual person asks us, sure.
I'm sorry.
Not representative.
If an individual person asks us, sure, but it was from the MBEA, and I don't have the...
I don't want to turn on.
Sorry. Is it working?
Yes.
So I don't have the verbiage of the, of the email, but it did imply that, you know, know, that you were looking to advise your members, which sort of implies, you know, an endorsement. And it's, seeking an endorsement, like you said, would basically, if we're, if we answered the question, it could be construed as seeking. And whether there was an endorsement or lack thereof, on either way, the attorney felt that it could cause a problem. Neither of us are attorneys, so we can talk about it all day long. But when we have, when the board attorney says you shouldn't do it, we're gonna go ahead and listen to the board attorney. It wasn't a slight on the MEA in any respect, and if that's the way it was taken, believe me, it's, you know, that's not the way it was meant. Just when we have, the board attorney says you shouldn't respond, we're gonna go ahead and take his advice.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, then, so if I had sent the email from my just Mawa Teacher email, the same 10 questions, you would have answered them?
I don't...
Because then we'll just do that moving forward, I mean, that's way easier.
Right, I don't, I don't think that the attorney would have, would have objected to that.
Okay, I mean, I, I think this is just...
I think what we can do...
The frustrating thing, right? I mean, it just, these barriers, walls built up, right? I mean, but, but no, no, because it, you could have said, you know, we can't respond to the MEA exactly, but if you email us as just teachers, we'll respond to you. And then we could have gotten the same information.
I didn't know that that was possible, so...
I just found out from you.
I know, we were just saying, you just asked us.
But, right, I'm trying to seek information. It feels like we're going through all these hoops just to get some simple answers. I mean, that's, that's not what I'm saying.
There's no hoops, Andy, and we answered your questions. Didn't we answer your questions?
Today, this morning, when we were coming to this meeting to basically ask those questions.
Right, we got, our attorney told us that we could go ahead and answer them now since you endorsed someone.
Okay, I mean, we endorsed someone a couple of weeks ago, but, listen, thank you for responding to us.
Thank you for asking the questions.
Yeah, I mean, we would have liked the answers earlier, but again, I, I hope that regardless of what the makeup of this board is, you know, moving forward, we can kind of improve relations and break down some of these walls. Thanks for listening to my questions.
Thank you.
Can I use the mic? Who's that?
I can take the mic, okay.
Okay. Going forward, I guess, two, two big issues for me is still transparency and, you know, the morale and being able to, everyone work together better. Parents, teachers, administrators, I think everybody's a little frustrated by what's been going on and...
Could you be specific?
Yeah.
What's the question?
Yes, I can be specific.
What, what is the question, actually?
As far as what happened with the candidate night and Ramapo Ridge HSO would not sponsor it. Ann Pauly and Brooke Gaslow did all the work for it. All we needed was a venue. I've done some research and other education organizations, along with the Board of Education, combined their efforts to do a candidate night. We have so many assemblies and stuff all the time that is being thrown at us. And to me, voting for the board is an important thing, and if it's not viewed as that by the school district and it's being just...
What is your question, specifically your question, Mrs. Lockbauer?
Because we did not hold any candidate night, okay? That sends a message to the parents that it's not important.
I'd like to take that. That is, so, in the past, like you said, the HSOS have always sponsored, and it's not just a matter of the venue, it's a matter of the insurance. So, you have to have a, an organization with the insurance to be able to use the venue. Hold on, I didn't interrupt you.
I'm the one who helped run the...
Okay, so I should, then you tell that.
The candidate's night.
So, you know how that works.
So, I know about the insurance, and that's why we were trying to get the HSO to do it.
Right, and, and they politely declined for lots of reasons. And you can ask the HSOS what those questions, what those reasons were, that's not privy to us. By the time we figured out that nobody was willing to sponsor, it was kind of late to try and cobble something together. The, the fact that, that the boards and associations do it jointly, it's not something we knew about, because it's not something we've ever had to think about, because the HS, because the HSOS... Going forward, as I understand, the library board is interested in taking care of it.
I, I talked to Kurt Hadley, they're, they're discussing it, hopefully they will be able to do it, but...
And, and for whatever reason, they declined this year as well. So, Brooke and Ann did a great job trying to drum up, you know, the ability to, to make it happen. I know Ben was working a couple of angles to try and make it happen too. It's not because we didn't want to, it's because for whatever reason, we weren't able to get some, or it's not we weren't able to...
You sponsored.
...sponsor, nobody was willing to sponsor.
There were, there were people on this board beating the bushes to make that event happen.
Right.
The community, there was no one in the community who was willing to sponsor the event.
Right, the, the, it doesn't, it doesn't help us either, believe me. And, you know, what we did at Mawa Bar and Grill was kind of like, all right, we don't want to do nothing, so we did the right thing, and we put something together, and we invited all seven, we invited, you know, Sal and Peter and Linda as well, so that every, so that at least there was some venue that people could come out, rather than doing nothing.
Okay, so going forward, going forward, if the library is unable to do it for, for whatever reason, can we commit to making sure that the two groups in this room work together to have something?
What happened was unfortunate, and by the time the library realized what was happening, it was too late to put everything together.
Right.
Now, by the way, it was League of Women Voters, then HSOS.
Right, yeah.
So, what is happening is that next year, and every year thereafter, there will be a meet the candidates night, separate from town, town officials, will be held by the library.
Okay, so they have decided it. Okay, great, great, great.
It will be happening. It was unfortunate, we couldn't move quickly enough to salvage. It was almost a similar situation last year, we had a meet candidates night, it was an unfortunate death, we couldn't get ourselves back in order to have it, instead of, I'm sorry, couldn't have it because we just couldn't get another date, it was too late. So, now we're starting these things earlier, so we have a date, we'll have a date earlier for both, to get meetings. And it's a, it's a merril year, which is about two years from now, I think, it'll be three nights. The consul, the mayor, and the Board of Education, and plenty of time to have the people meet the candidates. So, it's just a perfect storm, everybody went wrong.
This year was an anomaly. And like I said, it doesn't help, it doesn't help the community, it doesn't help any of the seven candidates to not have it. We all tried to make it happen, and we, we did what we could, we figured doing what we did was better than nothing, so we did something rather than nothing.
Okay, and I know, as far as the transparency also, like that last meeting, the scheme meeting that was canceled at the last minute, you know, I get tons of emails from the school, it would be nice to have gotten some kind of notification that the meeting was canceled without having...
Was it on, was it on the website or not?
It was crossed out on the meeting schedule.
It was crossed out on the website, there were signs on the...
There were signs on the floor.
I think that's one of my, my things that I want to see going forward, the website.
Because I know, I know transparency was one of the, one of the...
Well, but let's, 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 let's be clear, though, there's a difference between transparency and good communication.
Well, communication and transparency.
This is fair, this is fair criticism that the communication could have been better, but it's, it's not a matter of lack of transparency, like we're trying to hide something.
Correct.
So, let's just be clear on that distinction.
No, yes, communication, yes. Well, they go hand in hand sometimes.
No, they don't.
No, they don't, not in this case.
Not in this place, but sometimes.
Effective communication breeds transparency, I would say.
Yes, perfect, perfect, perfect. And, and the other thing I would like to mention going forward also, because the other candidates are in this room, is I would like to see more improvements to the special education program. So, there, we have a large number of children with ADHD, and you should not have to go into an IEP meeting.
Mrs. Lockbauer, if I may, I will be more than happy to sit down and discuss the outstanding special education program we have in the district, but I don't want to go into specific things that will refer to specific teachers in this venue.
I'm not, we're referring to specific teachers, I'm just saying overall.
I, I understand that.
Overall, no, overall, because I asked, I asked for a list of accommodations, none would, they would make none available. I should not, no, no.
Mrs. Lockbauer, I beg your pardon?
No.
Mrs. Lockbauer, please. Mrs. Lockbauer, I will be more than happy to sit down and discuss our outstanding special education program and what is going on as far as your child is concerned with you at any given time with any educator that is responsible for it. But I do not want to get into those specifics. I know how heartfelt and important this is to you, and it's important to me too.
It's not a specific.
It deserves that.
It is not a specific.
The, the program overview in this venue, not knowing where you're specifically headed, is specific and important to me. So, although it is something you want to discuss, I will absolutely sit down and do that with you, underneath the umbrella that we have an outstanding special education program that our students are doing a really good job in. Could things be improved along the way? Any grade given program in this district probably could. Yes, candidates are running on a number of different things, they are. I've read exactly what it is that they are running on as well. And they're things that I feel incredibly passionate about, and they're things that I'm very receptive to having a conversation about. But I don't want this microphone to be used as an open air to be able to discuss any issue that any single candidate may have or any single parent may have. It is something that needs to be done privately. You know I am responsive to you, I will call you in an absolute heartbeat. We can sit down and meet, and you can talk to me. But that is where I prefer, if it is okay with our president, that that conversation takes place.
Dr. Shone, thank you.
I will listen to you, Mrs. Lockbauer, I'm not shutting you down. But I am suggesting that an overarching statement about an outstanding program that many dedicated educators spend time with need not be just brought up underneath, candidates are running for different things. It is not proper, it is not right, and it should not occur at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
What I wanted to say, what I wanted to say was that accommodations for ADHD kids is not rocket scientist stuff.
Thank you for that comment.
Okay, there should be a list of accommodations that a parent can refer to, instead of having to go through the websites like a needle in a haystack, figuring out what accommodations can be available.
That is a request I can certainly, I'm sorry, Mrs. Barron.
I know that you'll handle that away from this meeting. You two can discuss that. So, thank you very much for your comments and your questions, as always.
Hi, Jenny Letter, second grade teacher at Lenox.
I'm gonna have my chat.
That's, that's... Oh, but I'm loved, you're loved. Okay, so I am here to make a plea for my school. Sergeant Jaffe was visiting us like a week or two ago.
You can hear him, yeah.
You got it?
Hello.
Yeah.
So, Sergeant Jaffe was at our school a week or two ago to have that, you know, that scary talk to us about what we do with an active shooter and in that situation, you know, just to remind everybody, you know, to be mindful of where you are and what you would do with whatever children were there. We have a problem in our school, and it's one of the problems that comes with a great big new building, and it's cell service. We literally walk around our school like this.
Which building?
Lenox Meadows. Okay, so Sergeant Jaffe said to us, we'll try to find a place, because a couple of people have good cell service. And he knew how ridiculous that sounded, but, you know, what do you do? Here, you're supposed to think on your feet, you're supposed to move as quickly as possible. A couple of years ago, we all said, well, why can't we at least get like a landline phone at each end of each hallway in our school? And then, I know there are things like extenders that they use in subway systems and things like that. So, here we are in this big, beautiful school with 500 children, and all of us teachers who had put our bodies in front of them, for sure, and to be, and to know that we would lose seconds, those very important seconds that he always tells us about, that we can't lose seconds, well, so we shouldn't be doing this, to find, you know, a way to get through to somebody. So, that's my first thing that I would like, I'm hoping that the board can help.
It is a request that they are fully aware of, that they are, the facilities committee is already in the process of vetting.
It's on the, it's on the radar, I guess.
It's on the radar.
Okay, great. And also, we did hear at our school that some of the other schools have water fountains, where you can fill up your water bottle. We don't have any.
They do, and they're fabulous, and it's certainly something we can...
And so, hopefully, because I will tell you that I am giving out like five bottles a week to kids whose parents refuse to let them drink out of the water fountains. So, I would appreciate it.
Lisa Rizzo just said that while we were walking.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Good afternoon.
Okay.
No, no.
Okay, you want them?
I'm not gonna give it to you. Thank you. He's 31, he's coming down this weekend for his Musburger.
Come on, this, this, literally this job makes you feel old over here. Look, I want to start off by saying, and Lisa said not to, but I am not a politician, and I'm not a public speaker, and I do not know how to control my emotions. I feel passionate about this job in this district, because I love this, the kids, I love the people I work with, I love this district. And, you know, I posted something on Facebook in regards to your candidacy, and it is not an attack on you as a person. I don't think anybody in here set out to have what has happened in the last three years happen to this district. I don't believe that, that's true. But unfortunately, much like if you have a bad lesson plan, or you have things go awry in your classroom, just because you didn't want something to happen a certain way, doesn't mean there isn't accountability. And I can tell you, in our district and in our school, and probably one of the reasons why we are the highest-function districts in the state, and quite honestly, in the nation, and those are facts, is because we are held to that accountability. And we're out here waiting for an hour and 20 minutes. And I'm saying to myself, what would happen if, if like an administrator or someone came into my room and I was late by 30 seconds? And this is just, it's a microcosm of the problem, you know? When I said on Facebook, there are three main issues that are going on here. One, there is a huge chasm between the board and the teachers, not the MEA. Forget about the fact, people at home, teachers make up the MEA, they're one and the same. You can't separate one from the other, and we're not here to cause problems. I don't want to be here, I want to be home. But it seems to me, and if you go back to November 30th of 2016, when we were up here before, we told you what was going to happen, we said it before in April in 2016, that we had lost way, yeah, but the problem is this, the only way that we can reach people is to let them understand, the reason why, when Schlock Bauer's been invaluable, I saw what was on that thing. So, my question is this, when you posted why all those people left last year, which I thought, look, I work with these people, so I know why they're leaving, I don't know if you had exit interviews or not, but they're gonna need Mawa as a reference, they're not gonna slam the district. That's just common sense. But I can tell you, how about the year before that? In the Ramapo Ridge, we lost our principal, our nurse, our crisis counselor, which would have come in handy, three supervisors, three guidance counselors, a science teacher, a math teacher, and this is all in one year, in one school. If you'd like, I'll rattle off their names for you if you'd like. And I am friends with these people, I go to weddings with them, I go and do tough mutters with them, I have relationships with them. So, to hear the board say things like, well, there's not a morale issue, I don't see you at the school, there is a huge morality, we lost so much talent. Let me tell you, I didn't start off as a teacher, started off in the business world. I thought, I'll become a teacher, because I like being around students, I like teaching English, it'll be great. And how hard could it be? I'm 17 years in, and there are times I walk in, I go, what am I doing? We have, yes, what is it, 20% of our staff now, Andy, is, is new? Or somewhere around that? It's, it's too much. And the fact is, it takes a very long time, and now for the first time, we, we went backwards. The board has, as you said yourself, two responsibilities, one for the students, one for the town. The fact is, the students, because we lost all these people, and they weren't retirees, a lot of these people were in their mid-30s, the late 30s, early 40s, seasoned teachers, we had a reservoir, and now they're gone. So, the kids right now, if you have kids in the district, I can tell you right now, they're not gonna get the same education as they did kids five years ago. That is a fact. You cannot just replace teachers and just say, well, there's no problem. You have a huge chasm between the board, you guys won't even answer a questionnaire. Look, I, I come from a family full of lawyers, I know lawyer talk.
We, we answered that question, we don't need to go back to that.
I got it, it just seems a little coincidental that you start answering the day of the board meeting. It does.
It's not coincidental, that's when we got the okay from the attorney.
Yeah, but why even go to an attorney? See, the point is this, no other board has ever had to go to an attorney.
Excuse me, we told you why, to protect the...
Yes, and I'm telling you, I believe it's disingenuous.
To protect you.
No, you don't have to protect me. What protects me is to know where you stand.
You know now.
But beyond that, so even if, so you're saying that there's not a huge chasm between the teachers and the org?
Well, I don't know, can you tell me what the chasm is? Can you explain to us?
Yeah, the chasm is this, the reason why you didn't show up, this year you showed up to the orientation, which was great, it was awesome, I thought we were making a nice move. The year before, no one was there.
Oh, no.
Well, I, I certainly did not see you there, and I can tell you something, I've never seen you before.[1711.12] Well, I certainly did not see you there, and I can tell you something, I've never seen you before.
Some of us have jobs too. I listen. Work, just like you, I would love to be there, I need to be at work first thing in the morning, so.
I really, sir, if this wasn't about our jobs and my, my question is this. We can rattle off the things why you shouldn't be elected, whether it's the fact that our test scores have gone down. The fact that we've lost all these teachers. The fact that there's this huge rift where we're even arguing that. We can't even have a, so what the question I ask is, why should you be reelected? What is it that you do that makes you a good leader?
You're asking campaign questions, this is not the place for campaign questions.
Okay, so what is your view of the board, you're the president?
Wait, if you wanted to ask that question, you could have come to our meet and greet the other night.
Ma'am, I sent you that very question on Facebook, not more than four or five days ago, you answered.
I'm not going to answer it on social media.
So what is so secret about your answer that you can't say publicly?
I'm not going to answer you, and I'm not going to answer you here. This is not the time or the place. If you want to discuss it after the meeting, I'll discuss it with you.
So what is your, alright, when I think back, what is your game plan to make sure that our rankings don't go down, they go up? I'm sorry, you're right, I didn't, I didn't ask the right question, so you, as the, you're the leader.
I am the leader, but I cannot give you my game plan. I have eight other people here, I have the administration here. I need to work with the teachers, with the administration to figure out what the game plan should be.
Is there a game plan?
It can't be my personal game plan, that's not how it works. So I cannot give you my personal, I can give you my, I need to sue wish list, right?
Is it working? Is this way that you're going to work?
I don't know if it's working.
No, I can tell you statistically, it's not, we've gone downhill. You have two responsibilities, you said so yourself, to the students and to the town. Well, our test scores are going down, and let me tell you something, property value is attached to what? The schools, that's why they moved here, so they're going down, so you failed in that aspect. And to the students, well, we lost a whole bunch of staff members. So my question, if you want to go that way, what are you gonna do to make sure that all these people that are leaving, that that trend stops and doesn't continue?
Finally, the question. I don't want to disrespect them, I don't want to hear your answer, I don't want to hear, I'll keep it up.
You just didn't disrespect them, so why? You just disrespected everybody. You're just like a gentleman. You were completely disrespectful.
Disrespected the administration, disrespected the board.
Why should they be respectful to you?
It's good, you have disrespected everybody. Your fellow colleagues as well, that the test scores have gone down. Yeah, are there any other questions? Yes, Ms. Jean, come on in.
You know me, I'm gonna talk, I can't, I'm a soccer mom, I don't need to talk.
Oh, no, you need it, you need it.
Alright, so I'm a soccer mom, doing the whole thing, whatever, I'm Liz DeJean, everything. I think this is all just coming out of frustration because the world we live in today is, everything's, everybody's posting on Facebook. Instead of, you know, answering in the email. Like if these answers, like in the old days, and I'm dating myself, when there was no Facebook and you can actually speak to somebody face to face. I'm dating myself, okay? But I still have this though, you don't, I have this. Anyway, so I think that's part of the frustration, is that, you know, we feel, we're passionate, that's a beautiful thing. I think it's a great thing that we're all, all of us in this entire room are so passionate about this community and this district. And that's where it's all coming from. And we all know, and we've all done it, you type it all up and then you go, "Should I hit send?" You know, "Do I hit that blue arrow?" So it, I think that's where this is coming from, the frustration of, everything is out there on Facebook. But there's very limited on our real, like on email and on conversation. So we're all on the same page about just trying to just make this community what it is, what it was. We all know what it is, I've been here forever, I'm not telling you how many years. Less than you though. But that's, that's all we want, we have a common goal. I have children in the district as well, you know, we all do. So if, you know, we forgive posts that everybody else posts, so I think it has to be this common ground, like, okay, we get it. In the heat of the moment, you said this, I said that, okay, let's move on. And that's really what it's about, we have to adjust, we're all learning technology, and I agree. You know, my room is the same way, I'm in, you know, a very old room, that I'm walking around with my phone like this too. But yet, I'm trying to do Google Classroom, and I'm trying to do this, and I'm trying to do that, and I'm frustrated. And I tell my kids, and I call them my kids, and I'm frustrated, I'm like, alright, I'm gonna try this, but if it doesn't work, get out a pencil. Pencil? So we're all in the same place. So we have to remember we're all coming from here. The way we express it is differently, but we're all coming from here. And that's where it's all coming from. So once we resolve this and get back to being us, we'll be good.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Vince Grandin, for those that don't know me, I run Mawatch. Which right now, we're at about 1,100 households strong. I live in Rio Vista on James Wright Circle. I have my age, a nine-year-old that attends JK and a six-year-old that's at GW. So don't you think you're old, try my problems. I keep in contact with the 1,100 people that we deal with, 1,100 households. And we're constantly keeping online through the Facebook, you know, kind of a pulse on the community. We do that both through surveys and trying to ask questions on what problems are. But I coach teams, I'm in touch with kids every day. I coach rec soccer, travel soccer, T-ball. What else am I coaching? Basketball, travel basketball. So I deal with kids. And as a person that not only has two little ones in the districts, but also dealing with a lot of kids just by being the head coach of a lot of teams. This is a different world than anyone at my age or, sorry, Peter, his age, I think, I'm 55. Yeah, well, I'm 55, so you got a couple of years on me. But technology has become a major part of our world, okay? Whether we want to admit it, whether we want to say it is or it isn't, communication in mild days by the chalkboard and sitting and asking a question. Unfortunately, those days are gone, it's been replaced by technology. I had suggested, when I heard through Mawatch, that we had a problem with a debate, or no one was willing to sponsor an HSO debate. I instantaneously jumped into action and threw our members, because I had suggested that we have a real debate for the BOE, because it's a very important organization. There's no reason why we can't have an open debate, an open Q and A session. And I was told by Kim, and no disrespect to anybody else, but I wanted to deal with the head of the organization, why? We didn't have this open forum of communication, well, no HSO would support it. Okay, Mawatch stepped up, Mawatch made some calls, Mawatch arranged a venue, Mawatch arranged the insurance, all middle of October, October 15th. I reported back to Kim and I said, "Guess what? Let's have our debate, let's have our open Q and A session, let's schedule it." She was all for it. And the end result was, we didn't have it because, as I was informed, and Kim can answer this better than I can. Some of the participants, the candidates, didn't want to do it. So my question is this, I believe as any form of communication, online has its purpose. But we need to be real world, we need to be in front of people. Mawatch has a lot of questions for all of the BOE. And I've made my words known to the people at City Hall and Town Council, believe me, I wish I stopped, but that's another ball, wax. But my question is, why is it, or why was it, Kim, that our offer, Mawatch's offer, to have an open debate, Q and A session? We sponsored it, we paid for it, we had a venue, we had everything ready to go. Why and specifically who declined to participate?
Well, I'm not gonna tell you who declined to participate, but I will tell you why. The reason was because there's two groups in town, Mawatch and Mawa Strong. And you guys seem to have a little feud going on. We did not want to get in the middle of it, that's why we chose not to do it. That's, that's in a nutshell, that was the reason, we didn't want it to get into politics, because that's not what the board is about. We didn't want it to get a contentious atmosphere with maybe one other group coming in and disrupting whatever you've put together. That's why we said that we couldn't do it.
Had Mawa Strong organized a debate? I was not aware of that, nobody, I.
They, well, they were the first ones who had approached us about doing something. And then they backed off because the HSOs said that they would do it. So then they lost the opportunity, the HSOs then refused, and then the League of Women Voters, I think, refused. Then the Republican Democrat Club were going to do it, then they said they weren't going to do it, then the library couldn't do it because of time constraints.
Well, we did, in one day, I put the whole thing together, and you know that, and you were, you were very supportive, you never told me at the time, oh, Mawa Strong is, or whatever, you passed me.
When I told, yes, I know, and then when you came back to me, I.
This is the first I've heard Mawa Strong.
I floated it out there, and people felt uncomfortable that there may be things happening at that, you know, Q and A that have been happening at Town Hall.
Was Mawa Strong? Or? I don't, I fail to see what Mawa Strong is doing.
We were concerned.
See, the beauty of the library taking this over is that we go on our way to become apolitical. We were never left nor right. And, and I can see what you're saying, Kim, you're right, that there was a talk around town that Mawa Strong, they're, you know, and your group, I hadn't heard much about. There is that political meaning that makes people leery of. We're a neighborhood watch group that's, you don't know anything about us, okay? We're not a political anything, and we weren't gonna moderate it, we were just facilitating the meeting. I had no intention of moderating it, we met privately, never, I'm just wondering why.
We didn't have the particulars as to who was gonna moderate, so I never knew who was gonna moderate, what was gonna happen. But when I floated it out there to the candidates, consensus was, we'd rather not because of these fears. And I think those are some of the reasons why the groups didn't want to sponsor it. Because of fears of having to hire security guards because of what's happening at Town Council, I think that was a huge, so, yeah.
Well, you can't live your life in fear.
I know you can, you know that and I know that.
Look, these are important issues, I don't live my life in fear, I have a position, I address it. You know, if we use fear and hide behind it, nobody's gonna do anything. And I'm telling you, from 1,100 people, 1,100 households, nobody knows anything really about anybody up for this BOE. It's not fair to the incumbents, and it's not fair.
Again, we had a meet and greet, and we had a small group of people that came.
At a bar at night, I realize that, I realize that, I understand.
It was open to the public, I think we had a lot of people, few people there, we would have wanted more people.
What we had arranged was a Friday evening, so that would have taken any of the concerns out, so let's not go, I'm just concerned, why?
I told you why, that's why.
Why in the future, if it can't be arranged? You're going around in circles, and what you're saying is true. A debate in person is perfect. But instead of what's happening now with their, on the social network, where you can send barbs out and you can't respond. Are you, I'll bet you between now and the 7th, everyone will be, I shouldn't say that, there'll be a number of candidates that'll be sending out barbs accusing DeSilva of selling bad cars, which he doesn't do. And he can't respond, that's a misuse of social network, I think, you're absolutely right, there should have been a debate, a number of people dropped the ball. And it's unfortunate, but going forward, it ain't gonna happen. Well, I'm happy to hear that.
Thank you very much for coming up and talking, I appreciate that.
Thanks, guys. If I could have a last word?
Yes.
So tonight is a very important night. As a board, we exercise one of our most important rules in hiring a superintendent. You'll notice on 168, unlike any other item on our agenda, it does not say, "Based on the recommendation of the superintendent's goals to do X, Y, and Z." This is an action of the board. It's very important that we took that process very seriously, everyone in this room has taken part in that. It was remarkable to me, the inventory of accomplishments of our district was amazing. And in sort of doing the further research, every single time I speak to administrator, I speak to Lauren, if you peel back the onion of what education looks like. There is a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes that none of us truly appreciate. And I, it's important for me, as a board member, to say that I'm so proud to be part of this board, so proud to have been able to make the recommendation to extend the contract for Lauren. And I think it's very important for citizens and teachers and administrators to know that we have a partnership with you, and the whole thing doesn't work unless that partnership is working. And I, and from what I have observed, we have a strong partnership with most of those stakeholders, if not all stakeholders. And we will work tirelessly to build those relationships in the coming years. So it's important, and I think it's a moment of appreciation for Lauren, and that we give her a round of applause.
Hi, everyone, I'm Linda Ziccone, and I am one of the candidates running for the Board of Ed. I never met you. And I just want to, since this is being taped for the public, I just want to explain to you why I did not participate in your candidate's night. I wanted a candidate's night just as much as everyone else, but when you, and I am not on social media at all. I'm not on Facebook, and this is why I am not on social media.
You're gonna live a longer life.
But, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I was told that when you proposed the idea of having a candidate's night, that you had already posted publicly who you were endorsing.
Yes.
Is that a question to the head or the superintendent?
No, I'm asking you.
I can't do the word, okay, but I do want to issue, because this is being taped to the, for the public, I just want it to be known. I would, I would love, I would have loved to have participated in a candidate debate. But those of us who are the challengers felt that if the incumbents were already being endorsed, it wasn't ethical.
That's something that we can take care, that's something you could speak to Mr. Grandin about after the meeting, but this is not the time or the place.
And Peter, as a board president.
Thanks for being at the meeting, Rico, we appreciate it. Okay, I have a motion to adjourn.
Hi, I'm Mike Doris, I'm a math teacher at Mawa High School. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the staff turnover real quick. It has been trying on the staff, and I think one of the things, and really, this is gonna be my question. I'm the type of person who wants to work with a competent staff. I get very frustrated when I work with teachers who are not up to snuff. I've been through some maternity leaves where we've had to kind of plug some holes, and it's caused a lot of extra work for myself, actually personally, to try to get these people up to speed on Mawa. And it's, every time someone comes into the school, there's lots of us who rally around these people, and we spend a lot of actual time and emotional time in these people. And I just, I guess my question is, is the board aware of how much stress this is putting on the rest of the staff? Because it's up to us, a lot of, I mean, not just us, don't get me wrong, administrators do a tremendous amount of work, I don't want to short what they do. But there's a lot of extra work that's added to our plate every year for the last few years, because we're churning staff. Every year, I have to learn, meet, get to know lots of students' names. And every year now, I'm also having to rediscover who's in my school working with me. And build new relationships so that we can help these kids better. And so my question to the board is, are you aware of how much stress, regardless of the reasons for the staff turnover? The amount of stress that is put on our faculty because of it?
As far as maternity leave, I don't know how we can stop that from happening.
That's not what I'm saying.
I can tell you, I mean, I'm not on the board.
To be honest with you, without hearing it from you, we haven't walked in your shoes. So to be honest with you, I don't think any of us could honestly say that we fully appreciate the, you know, the extra stress and strain that, you know, that you guys go through when staff turns over. I mean, I can say that, you know, in my job, obviously, when there's, when there's turnover, we know that there's strain. But I think it's a different kind of strain for, you know, for what teachers go through. Like you said, I don't have to learn, you know, all the new kids, and like you said, all your new colleagues. And that sounds like it sucks. I mean, but, right, and again, to, for us to say, I'll speak for myself anyway. For me to say that I truly understand that from your perspective, I would be disingenuous if I told you that I wasn't. I appreciate you coming up and helping us to understand that, that's our work.
Is there any way that you could convey that to administration, so they can, you know, I mean, before it gets to this point?
The question is, we, yes, yes, and you did, and you did very sincerely and very heartfelt. Please know from our seats, and certainly from the supervisors and administrators that work most closely with you, are so appreciative of what it is that you do when the newbie comes on. For whatever reason they may be, to get them up to speed and to also get your kids where your kids need to be. It's like doing double duty. So please know how much we appreciate it. I'm glad you said something, Mike, and I think it's important that we, that we keep that in mind as we move forward. And we will continue to have turnover because we will continue to have children being born. And we will have people who deserve to retire because they've put in decades of good service. And we'll have people that will want to make lateral moves because they're a teacher and they want to go into administration. We can't tell you that we won't have it, but we can tell you that we can be more cognizant and sensitive to what's happening to our staff internally. We can promise you that, there you go, thank you very much. We promise you that.
Anyone else? I have a motion to adjourn. My gallows second by Ms. Malvettish.